Hello, Mr. Sam.
Good evening, Mr. Lopez. Muted?
You muted?
I was, I was, yeah.
I was trying to read lips. Those people would be on by now.
Mrs. Lawrence is joining us by the phone. She said she was having some technical difficulties.
Oh, okay. There you go. I'm sorry. I see all of yous.
Okay, sorry, everybody. I was having computer issues this evening. So we are, are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Are we broadcasting?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:01 and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Uh, will the clerk? No, will everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm sorry. I've tried to get it to come up.
No problem. I think we can say the pledge without having a flag on the screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, law. Thank you very much, everyone.
There was a flag right there, okay? Right over there.
Uh, will the, please call the roll.
Dr. Beverly?
Present.
Dr. Body?
I just promoted Dr. Body to a panelist. He is here.
Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Hodgen?
She says here.
Ms. Lawrence?
Here.
Ms. Liljy?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez? Dr. Rodriguez?
He's just signing in.
Okay. And Mrs. Willis?
Present.
Orem's present.
Hello, I'm present.
Got it.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to any additions to the agenda this evening. Okay, seeing none, we do have two attendees registered to make public comment this evening. I see that one of them is currently present, so I will recognize Melissa Rogers in a moment to make her comment. Ms. Rogers, um, the board does not typically respond to public comment and you will have three minutes to make your comment. And you should be allowed to talk if you unmute yourself. Ms. Rogers?
Is muted.
Ms. Rogers, if you would like to make your public comment, please unmute yourself. Okay, is Jordan Thompson with us this evening? I don't believe so. Okay, Ms. Rogers, if you would like to make your public comment later, please raise your hand or send a chat and I will recognize you. We will move on to presentations. Our first, our only presentation this evening uh, is a performance contracting owners representative LLC presentation from Mr. Kurt Carter.
Thank you, President Lawrence. I'm going to introduce Barry Roney, our bond owners representative, who will introduce Mr. Carter.
Yes, thank you, Sam. I appreciate it. Uh, good evening, board members and everyone else. Hi, um, it's been a long time since I've seen some of you. Way back, I want to just introduce Kurt with a little bit of background information. Back probably in February, Katie, Katie White, myself and Ryan Kraft began looking at energy projects that could potentially save the districts some money. And what we, although we had lots of good ideas about what we could do, we didn't have the expertise to or the time really to implement those independently. Uh, and we thought it'd be a good idea to talk to some companies and some individuals that do that kind of work. So we talked to a couple of different energy uh, energy service companies or, uh, I think I'm, they're, they're folks that will come in and create an energy project and then guarantee savings. It sounds really good. Uh, in fact, sometimes it sounds too good to be true. And, and so in the course of those discussions, we came across Kurt Carter at the recommendation, I believe it came from St. John's Public Schools. Yeah, Kell Corbett up there. And she said, you ought to talk to Kurt because he's an independent owners rep. He knows this business inside and out and he advises owners so they get the most bang for their buck and can not only get these projects paid for out of the energy savings, but also then, you know, save the district money years down the road. So, uh, we, we brought a recommendation forward after interviewing Mr. Carter and that went through the steering committee. They thought it was a good idea, passed it on to Board Facilities Committee. They thought it was a, a good idea as well, if I'm not overstepping my bounds, Brian. But they felt that this was really something that the board as a whole ought to hear and act upon since it would result in making commitments for the district to spend money and then, you know, pay for bonds or other financing instruments out of the energy savings to implement those projects. And the reason we, we found this attractive at this time was with Mr. Carter's assistance, we thought we could leverage not only the bond projects, but also the sinking fund dollars so that things that we might do like boiler replacements with the sinking fund would get put into one of these energy projects, paid for the, out of the energy savings and then freeing up those sinking fund dollars in future years for other projects like door locks and windows and other security measures. So with that long introduction, I'm going to turn things over to Kurt to tell you about his business and himself a little bit. And also to, I guess, allow you an opportunity to ask him questions.
Barry, thank you very much. I appreciate your introduction there. That really helped kind of set the stage. Can everyone hear me okay? Yes, okay. Um, just wanted to, uh, give you a few slides and give you a little bit of background. I have been working on the energy business over 30 years and specifically with performance contracting for, I believe it's 21 now. Worked for three energy, uh, energy performance contracting companies. So I know the business from the vendor side of the table and I started my own business doing, working specifically with schools. Only in fact, I've only worked with schools last nine and a half years now. We just started into our 10th year and a Michigan native. So most of the work has all been here in Michigan. I've done a little bit in Arizona, North Carolina. But I live here in Michigan and went to that school right next door to you. Michigan State, I'm placing my banner on the wall. But, um, any event, let me bring you up to speed on, some of you may already be familiar with performance contracting, some may not. So I just wanted to share a few slides with you. Let me change my screen here and I'll do that. Okay, still hear me? Fine, I, I trust. Advance the screens here. Let's see. Does not want to advance. Here we go. Now I can advance. Performance contracting or more the longer term for it is energy savings performance contracting, sometimes referred to as ESPC. Is the use of guaranteed savings from the utilities and maintenance budgets is capital to make needed upgrades and modernizations to your buildings. Usually these are financed for a specific period of time. Uh, that's customizable. The state allows you to go out as long as the, uh, as far as the life of the projects. We usually don't recommend anything longer than 15 years. Most projects that we do are usually financed for 15 years. We have a few that get financed for less, but, uh, most of them get financed for 15 so that the districts can accomplish as much as they can, uh, with the, uh, with the upgrades. And then the average life usually ends up being closer to 20 years. So you have several years beyond the life of the, uh, the project. Couple of key aspects of this that are different from most of the contracting districts do is that this is turnkey. So if we were to engage and work with the district, uh, that end ultimately, but you know, bid this, the selected vendor would do this on a turnkey basis. Uh, they would be, we'd have one contract between the district and that vendor. Any subcontracts would be underneath them. So basically we've got one neck. We've got one company responsible for the design, the savings, the implementation, the functionality, everything. So it, uh, it really helps eliminate a lot of finger pointing. Um, another key aspect of this is that when the project is bid, we're actually bidding many things at the same time. We're bidding the savings, we're bidding the costs and the gearing, looking in detail at the guarantees offered. Uh, both the design and the equipment. So we're able to, um, use a tool that we've developed that helps wrap our arms around all of those elements as well as different risks and how the vendors assess those and come up with a score for how the, the projects perform. And when these are bid, the results usually come back in proposals that are 300 to 500 pages each. In fact, one of the last, like two projects ago, we did one for Westwood Heights. And we got three proposals and the three proposals totaled 1,700 pages. So it is a lot of legwork. We do all that legwork for the district and then bring all the results back to you so that you're in the management position just to make the decisions and we give you the, the information, make you able to easily do that. These are large and high impact projects. Typically the vendors, uh, won't be interested in doing these unless they're at least a million dollars. I recognize that for a district the size of Lansing Public, uh, that's a small project for you. But, uh, across the country, these projects are done up into the hundreds of millions of dollars. Most of the projects in Michigan probably average, because the districts are smaller than yourselves, average probably 3 to 5 million dollars and we worked on, on several that were closer to 10, but, uh, the, they work the same way. Another impact, another thing to note is that these are typically done because a district wants to, as Barry mentioned, wants to leverage the money that they already have. So if we can go out and find more savings to cover more items, you can save the money that you've got allocated to you through sinking funds and bonds and use them in other things. Um, or we can, um, add on to the, the energy project and make it bigger using just a portion of those savings and the rest being savings coming from the project. Usually then the funding for the project itself, uh, we look to your bond council to recommend the best type of bond. But usually they're, um, most commonly, uh, energy bonds, but the, the bond council actually recommends which type. But the key issue is that the state allows these to be non-voted bonds. So you don't have to go to the community for, uh, to raise taxes in any way. The state allows you to do this and just the board votes on it because you're ultimately using part of the money that you already got allocated for your utilities budget. You're just, uh, better spending that money on upgrades for yourselves and letting those, uh, savings then, uh, make the bond payments for you. Here's just a quick pictorial of you that the column on the left is your current state where you've got energy and operational costs. Then during the project, again, that could be any, it could be 10 years, 12, typically it's 15. Uh, you might be saving anywhere from 30 to 40 or 45 percent. It depends on the specific buildings and what the vendors find. A portion of those savings, most of the savings usually go to debt service. And then, you know, if we structure it right, then we can have some of those savings coming back to the district. It depends on the tack that the district wants to take. Do you want to use all of the debt service or the savings to cover debt service so that you can have the biggest impact possible? Or do you want a little bit of cash flow coming back to the district for other things? But that's all selected completely by the district and we work with you to show you the options. And then after the project is paid for itself, then all the savings come back to the district. As Barry mentioned, the energy service companies, if they were to present to you every one of them and will say this, and I used to myself, it's all guaranteed. We'll write you a check if there's a saving shortfall. There is a tremendous amount that they aren't telling you in that. And, uh, one of the school district, uh, superintendents, um, quoting him, uh, leaving him anonymous, but it was a Michigan district superintendent. He said, boy, this sounds too good to be true. What do I need to know? And so without getting into, uh, an hour, hour and a half long description, which I could easily do for you. I want to give you a, a quick overview and because this really, uh, I think will help set the stage. When a vendor, usually these projects are developed by vendor contacting the district. And then they help do a preliminary analysis and then they get it ready. It goes out to bid, they assist the district. And when the bids come back, you have only one bid. And, uh, the, uh, what I want to relate about this pictorial representation I have of this is that, uh, at best case, you know, the, your legal review and I believe that's Trune for the district, it was true, uh, as most districts in Michigan do. I've worked with Trune probably nine out of 10 times. They may look at the wording of the RFP, but that's really not magic. But they aren't, they aren't involved in the development process, the gathering of data or the calculations, uh, the assumptions that are made. They, uh, they aren't involved really in the cash flows or the specifications of the project or really the vendor selection. They get involved in the terms and conditions of the contract and just usually that aspect of the contract. The contract itself, um, will be, uh, typically, uh, about 300 pages long. And out of that 300 pages, um, Trune will typically only review about 20 or maybe 30 pages. And when they bring that contract back to the board and, and you ask, uh, Trune, has this been reviewed? They're going to tell you something that goes pretty much like this. Yes, we've reviewed the contract, but there are certain technical, certain aspects of a technical nature that are outside our purview. Now, it's easy to gloss over that, but what they're saying is 90% of that contract, they have not reviewed. I'm not being critical of Trune. It's the same with any firm and it's why they, uh, generally, uh, don't like performance contracts if no one else is involved in reviewing them because after, if they go south, then they get blamed. But, uh, we've worked with them on many projects and what we do is we get involved throughout this process. So we're also involved in the measurement verification and the guarantee. Uh, how does this get measured? How does it get guaranteed? What assumptions are those guarantees and, and calculations based on? So when we get involved, we're involved throughout this entire process, right from how it gets developed so that you get more than one bid. Usually we get three. That's pretty typical for us. Uh, we still keep Trune engaged. They still look at the RFP. They still help go through the contract. They see all of our comments. We, we review the contract before they do, so they get to see all of our comments. Um, and we've worked with them on, on, uh, probably, I think probably about eight contracts at this point, seven or eight. And we work quite well together, but it, it is, having, uh, a firm like ours work with you on this does a lot of things. Number one, it brings more vendors to the table. Uh, you get, uh, multiple, uh, high quality bids. You have somebody that can weed through those 15 or 1,700 pages to show what's important and what's not. Uh, it's very common for us to make dozens of adjustments, um, to each of the vendor's bids so that we can compare them apples to apples because we're looking at a lot of different things all at once. And the assumptions and things will be raised as we go through the interviews and questions with them. And we roll all of those adjustments back in so that we can, um, show the district side by side which project is actually the best. The one that saves the most might be the most risky. It might be based on bad assumptions and some of the data and things may be stretched. Or it may be, you know, we can't tell when, until we've actually done that analysis, which one is the best. But, uh, we look at all of that. We help do the selection and the interviews. We're there through the entire process, even in the, you know, installation and then the, uh, measurement verification to ensure both at the beginning of the project and after that the savings are done. The vendors, uh, do perform that measurement, but we, uh, look very closely at how they're doing it and make sure that they're doing it right. And, uh, and then, so year after your, the project's installed, they're giving you your first annual report. Our, our fees cover us right through that to, uh, make sure that, uh, we've reviewed that on your behalf as well. So we really are involved from the very beginning to the very end. And this is actually the, the time at which you contacted us is actually the, the best because we're not going back to repeat anything that's already been done. If, if there's questions throughout, please feel free to, uh, to ask. You don't have to wait. One thing that Barry and I mentioned now is really, why would the district want to entertain doing this now? And, um, you have a recent millage, so you've got, uh, existing funds that you could stretch. So you can use the, the funds, the, the savings that we come up with, plus if you choose to, you can use any, uh, any other funds or you can use just the savings we come up with and that allows you, as Barry mentioned, to use those, reallocate those funds to some additional things. Also allows you to coordinate, maximize the impacts. You're not doing any duplication, um, across buildings or projects. I did a, a brief analysis and, uh, based on the energy that the buildings are using now, Barry had asked me to look just at, uh, five or six buildings, um, just as a kind of a sample to let the district get their feet wet and see how it works. We looked at, uh, a little over 3 million to about 5.6 million dollars would be the, uh, the expected energy savings, uh, from those buildings. The, uh, there would be additional utility rebates and right now the, the utilities have, um, like consumers' energy. I know you're actually behind Lansing Board of, uh, Power and Light. But many of the utilities because of COVID have increased their payouts on rebates because they still want to use those rebate budgets up by the end of the year. Last couple of things just quickly is, uh, why would you want to select us? And it's really, um, we've had unmatched results, uh, in the state. Actually, um, when I started this, I did some research to see if there was anybody nationally doing what we did. And there were only a couple firms. They didn't spec, they didn't focus specifically on performance contracting. They kind of did a little bit on the side and their people who did it weren't from the inside of the industry. So they really were at a disadvantage for knowing how the industry really works in the same level of detail. So, uh, in addition to the experience, I have a master's degree in business administration, certified energy manager, certified measurement verification professional, a certified, uh, energy procurement, uh, professional. And, uh, also have a, uh, a certification as, uh, industrial applications or chartered industrial applications engineer as well. So that kind of gives us some background. We do a couple of key things. The engineer that works with me on these projects also has, uh, similar experience where his development work has been specifically in performance contracting. So it's not just a mechanical engineering PE experience. It's been specific to this industry. So he also brings a lot to the table and, um, one thing, uh, that I think is important and should be important to the district is that we're independent. We don't take any lead fees, any, um, entertainment, golf gifts, lunches, anything whatsoever from, uh, from the vendors. So when we work with the district, um, we work only for the district. We don't accept any business from anyone else. People say, well, we'll, you know, if you direct business our way, we'll give you a lead fee and I say, we don't accept any lead fees. If you want more business, just do a great job for, for the school districts we're working with. We're happy to invite you back to, uh, bid on another project. You've been awful quiet. You must have some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Uh, would you un, unshare your screen, please?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Barry, do you have any, uh, follow-up at all before I talk a little, just a short time here?
No, Sam, I don't have anything else to add other than that, you know, Kurt would, uh, operate in much the same capacity that I do for the district, but specifically on the energy projects where his expertise lies and, you know, we would engage him with the operational staff at the district to make sure that we're pointing him in the right direction and saying, you know, we really want to look at lighting in this building. We really want to look at boilers in this building, that kind of thing. So, that, that's the intent of getting someone like him on board and not just going to one of the, uh, ESCOs to, to have them come in and tell us what we need.
Thanks, thanks Barry. Um, are the, President Lawrence, that, that concludes unless there are questions right now. Bottom line in all this is that we're going to be able to save money, uh, by working with Mr. Carter. So and as Barry said, it could be lighting in one building, boilers in another, uh, uh, windows in another. It's just, uh, he'll be working closely with Barry and Todd and, uh, the SEDEXO staff also.
Thanks. Um, a couple of things. First, what possible, what effect is it's going to have on our net indebtedness? Does it apply to that whatsoever?
What, what we hope it will do is we'll, we'll have a choice, as he said, and, and as we go down the road on this, whether we want to pay down the debt as part of this. So we would be able to, uh, repay the bond slightly faster, which would be good for our community, or do we put it, do we roll it back into, uh, other energy projects that we would like to do. So that'll be a choice that will come to the, uh, we'll have a recommendation, it'll come the facilities committee, uh, Board of Facilities Committee eventually.
I just want to make sure it's clear that, that, that you're not saying, this is not a financial instrument that accrues new debt.
No. Go ahead, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. The, the, the money that provides for the construction, unless you're using existing, um, you know, if you're using existing, uh, funds that you have, which is possible, but most of the time districts will work through the bond council. They'll use typically, most common is an energy bond. There's other tools as well. The, the, the money is temporarily borrowed and then covered through the savings. The the money is temporarily borrowed and then covered through the savings, but the the formal indebtedness of the district, usually the way the bond council selects the bonds, they are not counted against the district's formal indebtedness. Now, do the districts usually look at their current level of indebtedness, even if it's not formally counting against that? Absolutely, they they usually do in evaluating what they want to carry. One of our two projects ago, one of the districts, they could have selected a three to four million dollar project, even though this didn't count against their formal indebtedness. They selected to do about two point eight million dollars because they wanted internally to just have more cushion in that in in for their indebtedness.
Okay, is this technically an an energy conservation note, is that what this would be? What what's the actual vehicle?
The most of the time I see that the the actual vehicle is is an energy bond. But and again, I'm not finding, I'm not licensed financial advisor, so I want to be cautious in this. But there are a number of different avenues that can be taken. That typically ends up being the most common. There are some other specific energy conservation notes that are available that can be can be exercised, but usually we, as we start in the very early processes, we know, okay, how much you're spending per square foot, what buildings you want to hit, what, how big is the project going to be, we go through that very easily. And then we bring in your bond council before we even get started to say what would be the the route that you'd recommend, given your knowledge of of the district's current financial position.
Okay, I just, I know a little bit about bonds, but not an enormous amount, and I'm just trying to to make sure I understand exactly how this would fit in, so thank you very much.
Mrs. Willis?
Hi, thank you for that information. I I just have, I guess I'm just not understanding what's going to be the total cost to the district for using this service, is that something that we will understand upfront, is there a maximum that we would basically put into the contract as part of the contract? Or does that number potentially change depending on the number of projects we undertake?
Let me make sure I can clarify the the question. Is the question in regard to the the cost of the project or the cost of our services, you know, with the project? Or both?
The services.
Our services? Yes, okay. Our services are very simple. We wanted to keep them that way, we work with, when we sign a contract with the district, we have a sliding fee, it's a percentage of the ultimate project that you do. Usually ends up being in the three to four percent range for what we'd be looking at for the sample project that of the buildings that Barry laid out. The larger the project, the smaller the percentage of the. We cover all of our own expenses for mileage, any, you know, meals, any office expenses. There are no other expenses to the district, it's just that same, that simple percentage. Now, if the project, now normally what we do is we draw fifteen hundred dollar a month stipend while that's being developed, so it might be three, four months while we're developing this. That part is a draw against the total project, but we don't, that's not refundable, the fifteen hundred dollars. But it does count towards the total project, a simple fee. I mean, it's it, it's not in addition to that. If the project, we come up with the project in the the district for whatever reason, does not matter why, the district says we're not moving forward. We've got other things to consider right now, really, there's no limitation on why. But if the district decides not to move forward with us, the only thing they've invested is that fifteen hundred dollars per month up to that point. There are no fees from the way it's set up, the vendors that were introducing to the district, that they're developing their proposals. They might invest fifty thousand dollars apiece to develop a proposal to put that on the table to the district, but the district has no liability to them whatsoever. And if the district, only if the district goes forward, does the district pay for that? And they only pay for the, that's included in the business case in the in the company that's selected. The other companies recover zero.
So does the district pay your company any sort of retainer or fee to to keep you guys agreeable to be our rep, even if there may not be a project going?
Well, we work under the the fifteen hundred dollar a month. Usually we want, we want to be very certain because that is a risk that we carry. The vendors carry, the energy service companies carry a risk because they don't charge you anything. We're not able to do that for free, so we use the fifteen hundred a month. But we just want to have a very good discussion with the district and with the board to make sure that we lay out what project is out there, what is the size that, what's the board's intent? We want to make sure that if we're going to go out and invest our time and try to solicit the vendors to come to the table, that we know at the end of the day that the district has a desire and wants to do this project. You know, the district's not just, you know, fishing for some pricing, the district's serious about doing a project. So we want to have those very frank conversations with you. And, you know, we we have had a few projects over, we've been working almost ten years now, we've had a couple that did not go through. We had a district that wanted to do it, but their fund balance in the three months we developed the project went from nine percent to one percent under their own management, and the banks said, no, we're not interested in, you know, in financing the project. We had another district that we had, there was a viable project there, but it was very limited, it was like only lighting, very little else, and that wasn't strategic to the district. So we basically, this was, that particular district was New Wego. Dr. Pat Mathis there, we explained to the board and to Dr. Mathis that, you know, these projects usually entail many things, boilers, chillers, lighting, HVAC controls. When you narrow them down to one project, we felt the district could do better just manage that themselves with a lighting contractor versus running it through a performance contract. And so we recommend they not do do a project. And the board said to us, well, you realize you're not going to get paid, don't you? And I said, yeah, we, I do fully realize that, we had collected about, I think, thirty five hundred dollars. But we said, you know, if it was our money, this is how we would do it. So we recommended in that case that they actually not do a performance contract. So sorry for the verbose answer.
Can you elaborate a little bit more about the performance contract? Exactly what is that means? Performance contract, what exactly that means?
Okay, the the vendor that's selected to do the project, they're actually on the hook for the performance of the project. So they design it, there's, they come back and, you know, normally if you do a plan spec project, a normal construction project, the architect might say, we think there's X amount of savings, but they don't guarantee any of that. And they don't measure it after the project is installed. In a performance contract, the energy service company is used to, and they are on the hook to design the project, to tell us upfront what the savings are going to be. And we review those savings calculations and the measurements and the assumptions. And then they install those projects for a fixed cost, so you don't have cost overruns. So that's a risk to them as well, but it is nice to the district because you have a fixed cost going into the project. And you know what the savings are going to be, and then they guarantee the savings. One of the things that that we do is, in particular, is that because of our knowledge of the business, the vendors say, it's all guaranteed, you don't need to worry about it. Well, yes, you do, because the guarantee is commonly split up into, part of it might be stipulated. Stipulated means that you both agree that as soon as the project's installed, the savings are automatically attained. Well, if you're a finance person, that's not good enough. And and we agree, but we commonly see operational savings might be a third of the project. We would highly discourage against that. And we would get into why, in fact, one of the first projects we did, the vendor, we got involved after one vendor, they got one bid back. We showed out a one point seven million dollar project that about eight hundred thousand dollars of savings was not going to be guaranteed. I mean, it was guaranteed, but it was stipulated, we showed the district why that would not be attained. And why they would not get a shortfall check for that. The it would, it would hamstring the operations director entirely. And the district said, we we don't want this. I said, well, we can rebid this and get that out of there. We ended up rebidding the one point seven million dollar project and got a similar scope for one point two million dollars because we got more competition and we got better guarantees. There are other ways as well to guarantee those, I'll hit those very quickly, but they can use spot measurements where they do a sampling, like for lighting, they'll measure samples of the surface. And they'll do with this with controls too. But there are different risks involved to the district. The vendors will try to paint a picture that there's no risk to the district. And if that's the way that they're measuring it, there actually is risk. The last way is to actually compare the utility bills. And when we structure projects, we try to get usually seventy to ninety percent of the project covered through utility bill comparisons because that removes most of the risk to the district. We look at the rest of the assumptions and calculations. And then we do a small amount of savings stipulated, like for operational savings. But we put that through a very rigorous test and discussions with the district. So that ends up being, instead of maybe thirty percent, that might only be three to five percent. But that's, that's how we help hold the just the vendor accountable for the performance. And then they actually have to come back a year later and measure the savings. And if there's a shortfall and we've done our homework and written the guarantees well, then they have to belly up to the table to write the district a check. We actually were involved with Marysville Schools and the vendor came back and said, oh, we're ahead of the game, we've saved more than we said. And we looked through their calculations and how they had accounted for that and how we'd set up the contract. And we said, no, you can't count most of those savings. And after meeting with them extensively, it was a smaller project, it was only about a two million dollar project. But the end of the first year, they ended up cutting a check back to the district for about thirty five thousand dollars. And they are in the process now of cutting the district another check for thirty five thousand dollars. The district didn't think they were going to get paid anything until we got re-engaged with the owner or with the vendor. And we don't take any cut of that, other, those other fees whatsoever that come back to the district, you know, from the vendor. That's everything we do for the district, any incremental savings we find and benefits we do, everything comes to the district. We don't share or split that, it's all the districts. And that way, usually while we work through the projects, every time we meet and find something additional, the district's very happy because they get all of it.
President?
Yeah, Doctor.
Okay. Our building is in so bad condition or there are no saving or what is the real reason why we had to do that? Or you are going to give us an analysis, building by building, and what we are doing and what is going to be changed in order to produce the saving of the energy or whatever? I mean, I I I thought they were doing a pretty good and and saving energy or whatever in our buildings, but now we are going to, we want to do better, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm gonna turn it back to the superintendent.
Can I just add one quick point to that?
Sure.
Is when you think about the sinking fund and how it had an emphasis on upgrades in a variety of areas, right? The energy savings component that Mr. Carter is talking about speaks to support for sinking fund dollars.
Thank you. Barry, do you have any last words here for us, please?
No, and I think we've covered it pretty thoroughly unless there are any other questions. I I think the the key takeaways are that we firmly believe from the operational side of things that engaging someone like Kurt Carter gives the district the best footing, if you will, on getting an energy performance contractor in here to get some projects done that you need done. And having them paid through for through a different mechanism than than what we've already set up with the bond or the sinking fund, so that basically leverages those dollars into other areas, other needs. And as we all know, the sinking fund did not cover anywhere near the the full needs of the district, across the district. So this is try to help that. Sorry?
I did my best.
No, you did a great job, but it, there's never a a bond or a sinking fund that can cover a hundred percent of districts' needs. And this is just another mechanism, and rather than leave that up to a vendor to tell us what is needed, we felt that having the professional advice on the district's side, being very critical and not, you know, overreaching on a project, so that when we do get a guaranteed savings project in hand, that we have a high level of confidence that it's going to actually achieve those savings and more. So that's the only other thing I would add.
Thank you, Barry.
I'm a firm believer in this.
That concludes our presentation, President Lawrence.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, we're going to discuss, is your question on this topic?
Mrs. Lawrence, can I talk?
Just a moment, please, Ms. Hodgins, Mr. Lopez, you're muted.
There you go.
Yep.
You can hear me now, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, just a quick question, and Sam, help me out, or or Barry. We get some, we're eligible for some credits through, what is it? Technology or or energy? What is, what is it called, Sam?
We can get rebates from the utilities.
Rebates through what?
Through through the utilities that serve the district, the board of power and light and consumers.
Right, so what do you call those rebates? I've been searching for the word, I can't find it. But anyway, what would this do in terms of that particular thing, you know, the rebates? Would it help us? Hurt us or just it would be neutral?
Well, I, and maybe Kurt can add to this when I'm done, but the really, the the rebates will be there. They are prescriptive from the utility as long as there's dollars to fund them. And as Kurt said, right now, they're they're actually offering bonus rebates because for months and months, their construction was not happening, so energy, you know, businesses weren't replacing lighting, they weren't replacing boilers. They weren't doing the things that would qualify for rebates. If I understand what Kurt does correctly, we will identify what the rebates are, what the value of those are. And then we can make a decision as do we take that in a check from the utility and put it in the in the general fund? Or do we allow, do we assign that rebate to go to the energy, the the contractor, the vendor that's going to do the energy upgrades, let them take the rebates? And it lowers the cost of the project and it, you know, reduces the amount of financing incrementally. There's a couple of options there, but those rebates are available no matter what if you do an energy project.
If I may add to that? I want to make sure I wasn't muted there. That that is correct, the one thing I'd like to point out is that when we bring in multiple vendors, their ability to get those rebates isn't all the same. We found, for instance, a recent project, the rebates varied from a little less than a hundred thousand dollars to actually up close to three hundred thousand dollars. On the same, if the vendors find more savings and more technology they can implement, they usually get more back in the rebates. There are also different skill levels with those vendors because there are some gray areas. And as they each work with the utilities, they can get the utilities to pay a little bit more. Some will go for those or try for them. Others will say, look, it's a gray area. If we get it, let's let's get as much as we can out of the utility. And so they get as much as they can. And then in the contracts, we set that up so that those are generally paid for, excuse me. They all come back directly to the district. PCOR doesn't take any cut of those whatsoever. We don't want them going, you know, we want the vendors to bid on the projects. We want all the savings to come back to the district. So it does become, as Barry mentioned, it's up to the district how you want to spend it. But usually we see those going back in to help fund the cost of the projects. You know, as part of the overall cash flow of the project. But again, it is, we just want to make sure that every dollar is maximized for the rebates, that it all comes back to you. Nobody's taking a cut of that. And that it is, it it can be maximized by getting the right vendor and having that basically be part of their bid too. Now, they don't guarantee the rebates. The vendors don't because that's ultimately up to the utility. But we have a very good feel when the projects are bid, how much research they've done and how solid are those rebates? And they're usually pretty solid. The vendors will bid them close to what they actually end up being. And they usually, the better vendors will come back and end up getting more than they had forecasted. Yes. I'm sorry.
Ms. Hodgins has a question.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Ms. Hodgins, you're muted. Ms. Hodgins, we can't hear you.
Give me permission. We have I don't understand technically. We have brand new building. Did we contact you or $1,500 a month? To pay you, what exactly are you going to be doing? Are you going to be looking for things that need to be fixed? Or is Mr. Rooney come and tell you or or Mr. Lang and tell you we're having this problem? I mean, we have non-qualified people that know we have contracts with other firms. I honestly don't understand. So did we contact you?
Yes. Ms. Hodgins.
Yes, sir.
We contacted Mr. Carter through Mr. Rooney. And we're we're looking at, as we look into the future for our energy savings and for any projects we're going to do. Mr. Carter will assist us in not necessarily choosing the vendors, but will assist us in looking at what the costs of that project are and where we can save money on it. So that's in right now. And I like one of the one thing that Mr. Carter said is where it's a $1,500 a month to start with. With, and that's that's basically our cost, at least upfront, until we decide on some energy projects. So that's why we had him talk to us tonight. Just so you got a chance to meet him.
Thank you. Okay, with the consent of my colleagues, I would like to revisit public comment, if that's okay. Indicate by, okay, thank you. And I will recognize Melissa Rogers. Ms. Rogers, I'm gonna find you on my attendee screen if you give me a moment. And I want to remind our attendees, you do have to register in advance to make public comment. That is the only way that the board will recognize members of the public to make comment. We have two registered people for public comment this evening. You have three minutes to make your comment. And the board does not typically respond to public comment. Let me figure this out. Ms. Rogers, can you say something?
Can you hear me?
There you go. Yep, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you. I just got a quick statement. I just want to know, why is Lansing School District the only district not allowing fall sports? The Michigan High School Athletic Association have given guidelines to follow to allow fall sports to be safely played. But we, as a district, decided our young men and women are neither capable of following directions that or the Lansing School District doesn't seem to us as parents care enough to allow their children to have the same opportunities as all the other school districts. I was wondering, as well as other parents, if there's going to be any reconsideration in allowing our students to play fall sports. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. We have another person who is registered to make public comment this evening, and that is Jordan Thompson.
He was on.
I see him.
Okay.
Do you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, so my name is Jordan Thompson. I am an alumni alumnus from Sexton High School from 2010. I just wanted to jump on real quick. I am currently coaching college football down in Miami. And I know, you know, I know it's a big topic as far as who should play and who shouldn't play. And I know that the Lansing School District decided that the high school students, you know, Sexton, Everett and Eastern shouldn't play. But I just wanted to kind of add my two cents in as far as, you know, I feel like it should have been either everyone plays or no one plays. And now that I feel like you have three high schools that are kind of just sitting out watching everyone else play. And I think it's kind of a bad, you know, kind of a bad view on the Lansing School District. And I just kind of feel, you know, you kind of feel bad for the seniors that aren't playing because a lot of those kids, you know, rely on football or they rely on a certain sport to get to college. So now you have high school seniors that are just kind of sitting around, you know, this fall. There's a good chance that, I know you move, you guys moved the season to the to the spring. But there's a good chance that some of those kids won't make it to the spring. They'll either, you know, find their way in trouble or they're find their way, you know, flunked out of school. And I know a big thing for me, when I was in high school, you know, my my grades kept the way that they are was because of sports. You know, sports was kind of the gateway for a lot of me and my friends, you know, out of the Lansing Lansing area. And I feel like a lot of the students nowadays kind of have that same mindset. And I think taking that opportunity away from them kind of hurts them mentally. Because, you know, a lot of them, they go to school to get a scholarship. And I understand that health, you know, is the main the main concern. But I but I feel like with all the other schools playing around them, I think there's a way that, you know, we can, you know, we that we can, you know, reach out to some of those other school districts and understand like, okay, what are you guys doing to keep, you know, your guys safe from COVID? And then maybe adapt or adopt that into the Lansing School District to allow some of these kids to play. Maybe not even, you know, six, seven, eight games, but even maybe, you know, four or five games just to give just, you know, just the opportunity to be out there. And, you know, one or two games could make a big difference for our high school senior or junior to land a scholarship. So I just wanted to add my two cents and, you know, from Miami, so that was it.
Mr. Thompson, imperfect timing because you had one second left. Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
No problem.
Okay, we're going to return to our agenda for this evening. Next up is report from Superintendent Mr. Synicropie. Mr. Synicropie, you, my friend, are muted.
I know, I know. President Lawrence, I just want to, this will be a brief report tonight. I've been here almost 10 months. I continue to be amazed by the tenacity and talent of the executive team, administrators, teachers, support staff, and our students and families. It hasn't been easy on either side of our screen to screen learning, but we keep pushing forward. Want to let the community know, we're forming two separate committees that we that we want to start up within the next two weeks. One committee will focus on what a return to face to face learning will look like. The second committee will focus on our special needs youngsters. The community will see a survey, hopefully by the end of September. We will need to gauge each family's interest in how they would prefer instruction to be delivered to their children, plus other questions and comments. Now for the did you knows, first, Mr. Keck.
Good evening. Did you know that since the pandemic started, our bilingual instructional assistants have made over 18,000 individual phone calls in Arabic, Burmese, Farsi, Kinyaranda, Nepali, Somali, Spanish, Swahili, and Vietnamese? Also, did you know that on Tuesday, September 22, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we will have our first parent community advisory committee meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbin.
Thank you. Good evening. Did you know that Office Max and Office Depot donated $7,229 to Riddle Elementary? As part of the Give Back to Schools campaign, the company selected Title I schools in Lansing, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, and Kalamazoo to donate funds to. Funds are based on the patrons rounding up to the next dollar of purchases. This campaign began in June and will continue through the end of October. Dr. Beard and her staff are excited to use the funds towards classroom supplies. Remember, we have until the end of October to take part in this campaign.
Thank you. Mr. Lang.
Good evening. Did you know the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program is a federally grant funded program that provides all children in participating schools with a variety of free fresh fruits and vegetables with the goal to introduce children to new and different varieties of healthy snacks options? And increase overall acceptance and consumption of fresh unprocessed produce while promoting nutrition and education. Lansing School District has 19 schools participating this year. It has just been announced that they have awarded another $271,750 for the program this year. We will be able to distribute fresh produce through our curbside meal pickup during the screen to screen learning. It's a lot of bananas.
Thank you. Ms. Black.
Good evening. Did you know that our athletics department has invested in an automated sports production system? Pixalot is a camera system that can shoot without an operator, covering the entire playing surface in panoramic view. Every gym and football stadium, including the Don Johnson Fieldhouse, will receive a Pixalot streaming high definition camera system. Pixalot will allow fans to watch their favorite team or sport, both live and on demand, anytime and anywhere. It is cost effective and will give our community full access to all of our games. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benavides.
Good evening, everyone. Did you know that the Lansing School District has held 11 device distribution sessions over the last three weeks? We've been able to provide 8,918 devices to assist families in screen to screen learning. The technology department is also offering support to families via hotline, digital forum, and onsite tech hours, which will begin next week.
Thank you. Dr. Diaz.
Good evening, everyone. Did you know that in partnership with the Lansing Fire Department, the Lansing School District has launched a new career education program, the Fire Science Academy? This is a one-year program open to juniors and seniors interested in a career in fire science. This new program is currently the only in-person class running in the Lansing School District, closely following all CDC guidelines. We are in the process of converting the former Autobody Shop at Hill into the Fire Science Academy classroom, which will be a great space to be able to grow the program. Our two instructors are current fire chiefs in the Lansing Fire Department. We currently have eight students enrolled representing Eastern, Everett, and Sexton. And our current enrollment is a wonderful mix of students consisting of two females and six males, two Hispanic, two African American, one Asian, and three Caucasian students. Upon completion of the program and reaching their 18th birthday, students can sit for the fire science exam and begin their career as a firefighter. This program would not be possible without the generous support of the Lansing Fire Department, which has provided all of the equipment and uniforms for the course, as well as providing the salaries of the instructors. In addition, the Lansing Promise has provided support to this program through the purchase of the textbooks needed. This is truly the beginning of an outstanding partnership, which will benefit the students of the Lansing School District, so they can keep dreaming big. Thank you.
Dr. Chapman.
Thank you, Superintendent Synicropie, and good evening. Did you know today is Constitution Day? Yes, September 17th is deemed as Constitution Day in our ordination. As a public school entity and recipient of federal school aid funding, we are required to observe and participate in either whole school or classroom specific activities that focus on educating our youth, grades pre-K through 12, on the foundation by which our constitution was written. In short, all 27 of our campuses were successful in meeting this federal mandate in our virtual learning spaces. Whether it was through fun fact quizzes, universal writing prompts, or interactive research, we accomplished our task in good fashion today. Thank you to all of our outstanding school leaders and their staff members for celebrating our U.S. Constitution during screen to screen instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, and the rest of the executive team. That concludes our report tonight. President Lawrence.
Thank you very much, everyone. We're going to move on to routine matters and old business, starting with committee reports. Facilities Committee, Dr. Beverly.
I apologize, I was having some technical difficulties. Where are we at? I'm sorry.
Sorry, we just wanted to know that the facilities committee hasn't met since our last meeting.
This is correct.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Moving on to Policy Committee, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. We're supposed to meet to meet yesterday, but we postponed the meeting until next week just to study one more time the Title IX policies. They are going, they have been changed so many times. But tonight, we have the second reading of few other policies. Then I hope the board will approve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Moving on to Promise Committee, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, President Lawrence. The promise met today. And it was a fairly long meeting, but a very productive meeting. First of all, let me report that the golf classic that was held a couple, about a month or so ago, brought in $45,000, which is a very good take during this time of COVID. We're also working on a couple of other events. Lansing Reads and probably Terry Bernetto is pretty much aware of this. But what it is, is a project that will get volunteers as message makers, reading children's books and videotaping them. And make them available at schools for teachers to have as resource. And they're also going to be collecting children's books along with working with the Lansing Read. And that should be a pretty nice project coming up. So that's going to happen. The third one is the balloon week, balloon week. So during this week, there'll be pop-up balloons virtually. And this is a fundraiser, by the way. So on Friday and Saturday, there will be 20 to 30 balloons going up. And you can take a virtual ride, by the way. So make sure that you log on to the Promise site and and take a virtual balloon ride, okay? We'll also talk about future investments. And in that sense, there's a couple of things that are happening. Lansing Promise Endowment Fund was formed in the name of memory of Lisa Damon, who recently passed. That's Mr. Damon with the Chamber of Commerce, this is wife. So they're going to be working on that fund. Also, another special fund with Jack and Sue Davis Fund. As we all are aware, Jack Davis was a board member in our school district and very supportive of the district itself. So that's something else we're working on. And then a third fund would be the James Butler Fund. They're working on that and seeing how we can work it out. The text capture, we're still waiting for the final numbers. I know I've talked about that before. So we should be getting that within the next few days. And as soon as I have that, I will pass it on to you. One of the funds that is continuing to work is the Hope Scholarship Fund. And as you know, the Hope Scholars has merged with the Promise Scholars. It's not one, but that fund continues to help Promise by yielding, I think it's in the range of four percent annually of the five million fund. So it's very helpful to Promise and to do the things they have to do, especially with children at risk and scholars. Next, we, there's a couple of campaigns coming up, again, to gain support and financial support and other. So we're going to have a community campaign, campaign at large for the community. There's going to be a corporate campaign directed at, obviously, corporate Lansing and Lansing area, Lansing alumni. And you know, the Promise Scholars have already graduated from colleges and universities, you know, MSU and LCC and what's the little school? Not Little School, but our friends down south.
How's that?
Olivera. How can I forget Olivera? The other one is.
No comments.
So working on that, another effort would be plan giving. If you'd like to, you know, plan giving, please think about it. The other thing is that one of our Promise Scholars, who is still in school, but is working with, at the Promise Office, Tina Nguyen, she is kind of storytelling on video, and is going to be working with the current scholars and other community members to get the stories on video and put them up so scholars themselves can tell their story of how they've been able to succeed in their effort to finish college. And the last thing, and I think Dr. Rodriguez can chime in on this one, on anything if he wants, but on this particular one, the Spartan Promise Initiative made a presentation at our meeting today. And among the things they said, and I did send you the board and you, Sam, the copy of that, of their report through email, so you have it, and also the board members have it. So one of the things that it pointed out, that Lansing Promise students have an eighty-four point six percent rate, graduation rate, at the sixth year, compared to eighty point something percent for general MSU students. So we're doing better in that sense. The report is very intensive, and it's got a lot of information that you can read and see and make some comment on it, but it's very instructive. And like I said, I think, Dr. Rodriguez, if you have anything on this one, please go ahead and tell us, give us your thoughts on that, and what you thought about the report.
Thank you. Well, I think that you did a really good, good job. We had to congratulate Mr. Lopez because he was reaffirming one more time to be the treasurer for the Promise Son Authority Board, that one more year he will be taking care of all the money. Then congratulations to him. The last part of the, this year, we gave about three hundred and sixty scholarships. Our students and the students from other places in Lansing received this year, three hundred and sixty scholarships. Now, the last report was about our students, Lansing students, and Promise students at Michigan State University. And I think that we should have these people at Michigan State to come to tell us how our students are doing in Michigan State University, how other students are doing in Michigan State University, and how the Promise students are doing in Michigan State University. In their first two years, freshman and sophomore, we lose, the first year, five percent of the students, and the second year, thirteen percent of the students. After that, we only lose about two or three percent in the other two or four more years. Now, when you graduate in four years, you save one hundred thousand dollars. Then I think that Board of Education or Lansing School District should know how we prepare our students to go to the future universities. Because what Michigan State is doing, it probably happened in many other places. The other thing that they are doing is they are going to create Promise groups, Kalamazoo Promise Students, Lansing Promise Students, Flane Promise Students, and they are going to be working with them specifically at Michigan State University to be sure that they receive all the services that they need to stay in the university. And that is the, and finally, all of that is about diversity. Diversity when they finish, diversity where they are in the university, and diversity where they go in. And that is another good goal for Lansing School District, that we had to work with Michigan State University. Then the scholarship for Mrs. Damon is going to be for the students in Sexton. Then really, Mr. Lopez did a good job in reporting and sent it to us, the report from Michigan State University. Thank you for the opportunity.
Madam Chair, that concludes the report. And again, you know, you have that report in your email, so you can review it and take a look, see off it.
Thank you for sending that. We're going to move on to our consent agenda for this evening. Our consent agenda includes approval of the September third regular meeting minutes and receipt and approval of the treasurer's report, which I know our treasurer will have some comments on. May I have a motion? Dr. Rodriguez.
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Dr. Body. Any discussion? Dr. Burrows.
Thanks. I'm not going to dwell too much on the specifics, because the end of the year, particularly given the issues with COVID, the actual transfers of revenue is going to be a little bit misleading. I will say the ending general fund cash investment balance was twenty million, which is four million dollars higher as compared at the same time last year. But particularly, I want to focus on some donations we got from the Thomas and Daniel Gonzalez, from K-Feeds, S, I'm going to pronounce this one, Il Innen, and the Shore Lansing Fund. And we also received a donation from the Heart of West Michigan United Way. So thank you all very much for supporting the district. And I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Madam President, they said, I don't know who, we donate fifteen thousand dollars to our schools. That go directly to the school, it don't come to the district, this money, right? I think it was Staples.
What, the donation that Ms. Corbin was talking about?
Yes.
That, you want me to get that one? The, that was through Office Max, and it was seven thousand dollars, seven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine, I think I remember. And that was donated directly to the school, but that was just today. So, but that will go into schools' accounts, but it is a donation to the Lansing School District.
That's great.
Thank you. Dr. Burrows, anything else? Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgson?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Lilji?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to action items for this evening. Our first action item is the second reading of updated policies. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mrs. Willis.
I move that the Board of Education consider the policies included in our attachment and as amended, be read for the second time and adopted.
For, it's been moved by Mrs. Willis, supported by Mrs. Lilji. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Lilji?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business for this evening, first up is Energy Project Owners Representative. I would like to table this item. Any discussion surrounding that?
No.
And I'm going to go to Mary Kay Scullion to make sure that I don't need to do anything more.
Madam President, can I ask a point of clarification?
Absolutely.
Bring in Mary Kay. It's under new business, just as a discussion item. I would submit that we've held a discussion on this item, and that if there is going to be any, instead of tabling it, because I need to table it, technically have to bring it up, and every agenda needs to take action on it. Instead of doing that, I would just submit that we have held discussion, and that if there's any further action needed regarding this topic, that it would show up on the board as an action item, and then we could discuss it, and there were emotions to prove it.
Good idea. Okay. We've had discussion about this. I believe that we need to allow administration to do a little bit further work on this before we have further discussion. Okay, so we're going to move on to the amendment to LPD and the Hill Center lease. Before, Sam, was that you?
Yes, I'll wait.
Okay. I just had a question and noticed a small typo. Gordy, this is you, yes?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
In paragraph number three on page one, there is a small typo in the second line, lighting fixtures at the LPD space, there needs to just be a space between fixtures and at.
Thank you.
And you're welcome. And I don't, I don't need to see the exhibits, but I'm imagining that there are exhibits A, B, and C that are attached to this.
There are, yes.
That's all I have.
We do have Gordon Van Wieren from Troon here tonight, and also Katie White is also on if we have any questions. This has been a two-year process, and we've talked about it and talked about it. We finally think we're there. I'm not sure what kind of discussion we need to have on this, but I'd be open to it. The city is all set, Gordy is all set, so we're all set. Gordy, do you want to add anything at all to what I've babbled about here?
No, Sam, I would just indicate by way of background, toward the end of the original lease, the City of Lansing proposed a laundry list of items, and over the last couple of years, we've negotiated that list down to the items that are before you tonight. I know that John has obtained some bids for the lighting and the barricades, excuse me, the door lock part of the amendment. He may want to explain what those bids are and what they came in at, but other than that, this is a, it's been a long project, but I think we're at the end. The proposal is to extend the lease for three years, and the improvements, I think, are going to overall make improvement to the building itself. In the event that the Lansing Police Department were to vacate in three years, the improvements, except for the barricades, which, if the school districts option, are going to be required to be removed, these are all benefits to the building itself, the infrastructure.
Thanks, Gordy. Any other, I'm sorry, President Lawrence, I almost took over your role there.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, good. Awesome. Can we, if anyone would, do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Okay. If anyone would like to make a motion and.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lopez?
I move that we approve this contract with the Lansing Police Department on the Hill Center.
Or.
It's been moved by Mr. Lopez, supported by Dr. Beverly. Any further discussion?
Just like to say thanks to the administration and to our legal team for their perseverance through many iterations of this. We've been round and round and back around again on this multiple times. Thank you for ensuring that this lease agreement stands to the benefit of the district.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Mrs. Willis?
Sorry, I'm just going to channel my inner Shirley and ask Gordon a question, just because he spent so much time waiting here. So I want him to feel like he needed to be here for at least something. So, question, comment person question. First, I'm really happy to see that it is in the lease that if it's the, if it's the will of the district, that they will be removing the barricades to return it to its original status, and then the rest of the upgrades will, are good to the building for future tenants. So that's, my question is just terms of renewal, because the renewal of this lease took a really long time, and we have been month-to-month for quite a while with the city. Is there anything that outlines how far in advance of the expiration of this lease that we will need to start working at renewal, or that they would have to notify us that they're vacating? And you're on mute, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's my recommendation that at least a year before the expiration, that the parties start talking about a renewal, because I question the ability of the Lansing Police Department to relocate in the amount of square footage anywhere in that area of the city. So I think it's critical that we, the next go-around, we start talking a year before termination. But to answer your question specifically, no, there's not a time period in the lease.
Any other questions? Okay. There's a motion on the table. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Finally, yes.
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgson? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Lilji?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yep.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mrs. Willis? Yes. Motion passes.
I was like, that girl better say yes. Okay, moving on to bid recommendation to purchase Microsoft E E S. Sam, you're muted.
Oh, yeah, okay. Jeff or Jessica, would you kind of just run us through this very briefly and what we're doing here?
Sure, I can do that for you, Mr. Sinicropi. This is the Microsoft Education Licensing that we annually renew. This is the licensing that gives us our Office 365 email access. It gives us access to the latest Windows operating system licenses, as well as the Office Desktop App for PCs and Macs. This is a program that we've been utilizing for a little, I think, six or seven years now. We believe it's a great benefit to the district. The Office 365 has been a critical communication tool and collaboration tool, and it's, we're bringing it to the board again for approval this year.
Mrs. Willis?
I just have a question because one of the things that's listed in this proposal is specifically related to software updates that we're having to put on the computers that we had to purchase for remote learning. And I'm curious if any of that expense can be coded to our, basically our COVID relief funds.
Yeah, the answer, I believe, is yes. We've put a lot of technology in there. Jessica, do you, do you know the answer to that right now?
Yes, we, anything that would be considered a COVID expense that we would be doing because of COVID, we can put in our, in the CRF School Aid or COVID Relief Fund that you're, that you're talking about. In fact, Mr. Lang and I are finalizing those grants coming up tomorrow, and so we will take a closer look at that as well.
Okay, is it, is it possible for us to just get an update on that? Just because when I look here, it says our funding source will be the Technology Budget General Fund. But if any percentage of that or all of that can be expensed to that grant, that would be preferable.
Absolutely. We agree. And that's what, that's what's happening with lots of the stuff, is that we're putting it somewhere to start with, and then as we find out what we can use things for, it gets put into that budget, it's replenished.
Questions from the board? Okay. We will move on to report from Secretary and announcements. After the report from Secretary, I will recognize board members who would like to make a comment this evening. Doctor, take it away.
Thank you, Madam President. Monday, September twenty-first, Lansing School District, along with Ingham County Health Department, will be hosting an outdoor immunization event from one P, one P M to four P M, free to all Lansing School District students. Location, the Dr. Eva Evans Welcome Center, twenty-four hundred Patengill Avenue, Lansing. Tuesday, September twenty-second, virtual pickup meeting, Parents Community Advisory Council, from six P, P M to eight P M. Tuesday, September twenty-ninth, Parent University Community Resources, from five P M to six thirty P M. Sign up through the Lansing School District website. Wednesday, September thirtieth, No School Professional Development. Thursday, October first, Regular Board Meeting at six P M. Virtual meter via Zoom with Viner. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. I'm going to first recognize Mrs. Lilji.
I just, thank you, Mrs. Lawrence, and this is just a big old thank you. I know Jeff Vanderlon has been working like crazy. I just want to thank you, Jeff. I only know that, you know, because I have been hearing from my husband, who's a teacher, and my kids, who are both in the district, and their teachers about the constant testing that is happening for internet and bandwidth. The constant assistance that's going out to students and teachers whose hotspots at home may work sometimes and not others. I want to thank the Executive Committee and our superintendent for the incredible, incredible leadership you have all shown. It's been a tremendous thing to witness things that I can't even wrap my head around, how you know what to do in this moment that we've never faced before. And that, you know, we are now in the middle of school, virtual school. And I want to thank all of the teachers and all of the staff for all of the home visits and nighttime phone calls and weekend text messages and everything that I have not seen, just, not just my husband, but you know, every, my own children's teachers and the many teachers that I happen to know in my life have just been working nonstop to support kids and families, to make sure that everybody is seen and heard and accounted for and engaged. And it's just been a tremendous thing to witness. I mean, I thought I loved the Lansing School District before this, but, boy, you guys, I, I and also thank you to all of the parents who have, because this is a really big, big sacrifice for parents right now. And all the parents that have partnered in with all of those teachers, I just have a heart full of gratitude and awe as I've watched this whole thing happen. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. I love you all. You're amazing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lilji. Mrs. Willis?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to just express my, express my concern and understanding that I know that there's a lot of families in our school districts that are saddened by our decision to not have any fall extracurricular activities. I think that it's important to recognize that it, the decision was not made at all, and, and disregard for what we think our students and families are capable of. It's all about the safety and well-being, and frankly, I'm grieved that other districts haven't taken the same precautions that we have to protect the safety and well-being of our students. And we believe that if circumstances had been different, that we wouldn't, we'd be able to move forward. And so it's not about whether we do varsity, not varsity, some sports, not sports. If we're saying that students cannot be present together, physically together to learn, which is our core mission, then we also cannot facilitate other activities. Now, with that being said, this was not meant to be permanent, and it's not something that we want to see happen a long time. And so I'm aware that, Mrs. Sinicropi, you are working on and have established a committee that'll be working together on our Return to In-Person Instruction Plan. Because as folks may know, we are required to review our remote learning plan monthly until we are able to return to learn in person. And part of that return to learn in person will include reinstating extracurricular activities. And so, Mrs. Sinicropi, can you please just share with the board and for those watching and attending what that committee looks like, what the scope of that's going to look like, timeframes, who's on that committee, just so folks know that this is an ongoing process that we are considering behind the scenes.
The committee itself consists of teachers, principals, members of the executive team, people, personnel from operations, school nurses, school, let's see, who am I missing here? I have a couple of board members that we've asked to be on the committee, too. We're trying to, we're looking at all aspects of what returning face-to-face means. In returning face-to-face, you are correct in saying if, when, if and when we choose or we come back face-to-face, there will, athletics, or, excuse me, extracurricular activities will be included in any decisions that we make. And my, my hope is, is that we start looking at what the metrics look like, and we come up with a plan, probably in three to four weeks, about what that looks like and what we'll do after November sixth.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez? Mr. Lopez?
Yes, thank you, thank you. I unmuted. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind everybody that we have entered the, the Hispanic Heritage Month, it's the fifteenth. So we're in the beginnings of, of that month, and I just want to ask the Sinicropi if there's anything that's been planned to, to work with students on that, and something I know COVID and online learning puts a kibosh on a lot of stuff, but e- even though it's, it's historical, and there are things that can be done, so just want to know if you have anything right now, or are you going to work on it, and give us some information on that.
I will make sure you have some, the board has some information early next week, okay? And we, we discussed it very briefly this morning, but nothing, nothing firm on plans yet, Mr. Lopez. We'll let you know, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Any other comments from the board? Dr. Rodriguez?
Doctor, thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Dr. Chapman for reminding all of us that day of the Constitution is today. That is the Constitution to protect me and many others. And I hope that we maintain this alive, and we hope that our students learn more and more about the Constitution. And just to remind me that today, the Constitution Day, made me to respect this country more as a board member, as a person. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Before we adjourn this evening, I just wanted to take a moment, and it seems like every few meetings, we have to again recognize members of our family who have passed away. And unfortunately, we're going to do that again this evening. I know we recently had a student from Beekman who passed away. Sam, can you recall that student's name?
His name is Jonathan Karayuki?
Thank you very much. Further, very recently, as a result of a house fire, two of our littlest students, Aston Griffin and Jesse Klein, also passed away. So I would like to invite everyone to just join me in a moment to remember those kids. Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry to end on this sad note, but our hearts are with your families. Thank you very much, and with no further business before the board, at seven forty-three, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
All right, everyone. Thank you.